Good evening and welcome to the City of Izanty City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 21st. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without any injustice or wrong.
Councilman Burgley, are you here via phone? All council members are present except for Councilman Burgley at this time. Is there any public comment? No public comment. I believe we do have a modification, Ms. Wood.
Yes, we do, thank you. Good evening, Mayor. We do have a modification to add a discussion item, which will be 1A. And this will be for a discussion of the rocks near as the, we'll just call it the barrier, going to Unity Park.
Which you gentlemen do have photos of what Ms. Wood is talking about. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the modification? We will call K-1A.
Make a motion to accept. Second?
I have a motion to accept by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
And myself, Jeff Johnson, aye. Motion carries five zero. Make note that all council members, including Councilman Burgley, are now present.
Watch the pledge of allegiance from outside of the room.
Approval of the city council meeting minutes for April 7th, which was a regular council meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Collison. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Burgley. State your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And myself, Jeff Johnson, aye. All opposed, same sign with your name. None being said, motion carries five zero. Announcement, city council meeting will be Tuesday, May 5th at 7:00 PM with an EDA meeting immediately following that council meeting. Park and Rec and Culture Board meeting for Tuesday, April 28th has been canceled. Any council committee reports?
I was at the Fire District meeting last Wednesday. And you are now looking at the new chair of the Fire District.
God help 'em. I'm kidding, congratulations.
Should we note a gesture that?
They do, it's in mid discussion what we gotta do to get, what is it, Oxlip? Oxford?
Oxford.
Yeah. On board with the joint power agreement changes. And we made a discussion that there was going to be a...
Indefinite.
Whatever those attorney's questions are, we're giving him his answers. And one of the big hangups is the gentleman from Oxford wants to, to raise the hours of charge from eight hours where they start charging to 10. As of right now, for the month of April, Al is not charging for calls. And if we would've been able to charge for those calls at this time, we probably would've made half of those, half of that $10,000 that was being billed on that fire would've been covered by now. So, I made a motion to move on and give him his 10 hours of charge rather than eight. So, hopefully we're gonna get somewhere. I don't know.
So after, instead of after eight hours of them billing, they would wait until the 10-hour mark ends their billing?
Yep. Yep. It's, it's, we gotta do something. It's not gonna ever change. It's, I'm sure it's hung up in his head that that's what he wants. And, you know, that's sitting back here, we have to cross this hurdle before we get to the next. But if you give him something now, dingle and a carrot, he might be able to get somewhere.
Hopefully something works. Any other council committee reports? Councilman Collison, have you been to BMX?
No, they haven't had the last two.
Okay.
Park and Rec is nothing going on. The last, the last meeting was canceled and this next one coming is canceled.
Any chamber?
Paul's been to the chamber, I think, right?
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I do wanna add, on behalf of Councilman Collison for the Rum River BMX, they did get informed by USA BMX that the national will be postponed. So, the national event in May. We don't have another date that's been chosen, but that national event has been postponed.
And so was the Gold Cup qualifier, which was postponed last weekend.
Icicle got postponed too, but is that a hard schedule, that 18th, or is that a, hopefully?
For which date, or which event?
May 18th, for the icicle.
I'm sure that it could be...
It's up in the air.
It's up in the air, I'm sure, yeah.
All right, with that being said, we'll move on to the business items, which now we have K-1A, which is gonna be the rock or landscape for the Bluebird Park, for the rodeo grounds, which we do have photos of that. Councilman Gordon, you, or Councilman Lundin, you can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong here, but what they're looking for is they wanna be able to park cars there for the rodeo. Obviously, they're looking for a way to get vehicles in and out of that area safely. I see there's edging around. That's the edging you were talking about, I see, Ms. Wood, and I can see it in the photo here.
Yes, there it is, and the photos, the edging and also the rock landscape. And just to be clear, it's Unity Park, not Bluebird Park.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did say Bluebird, didn't I?
That's correct.
So, it's right across from the primary school?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, if we move two rocks and some of that edging...
Well, yeah, so like, the picture that you guys, maybe, I don't know if you have it on the left too, but it's the one with the tree in it, the big tree to the left and then the two rocks. So, I mean ideally, I think, and you can see that, you know, that white building behind there, that's the gate entrance for the rodeo, and then the handicap parking is kind of to the right of that. So, I think ideally, if you could move like four rocks out of there, then that would open that up for two lanes of traffic.
In and out.
And then the edging kinda comes apart right where those four rocks are. It's like, kinda got like a peg in between the edging where it's pounded together, you know, holding it together like that. So, I think if you took the four rocks out, the edging would kinda be able to be pulled apart in that spot.
Edging isn't that easy to, I mean, it's easy to rip it out, but it's laboring to put it back in.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I've been assured...
It's staked in, you gotta dig back, trench it, stake it, re-stake it.
But I've been assured by Fire Chief Al Jankovic that the Fire Department would do whatever they gotta do to try to make something work here. And if they tear up any grass or whatever, they'd come out and re-black dirt, re-saw it, seed it, and whatever. I don't know how you all feel, but the rodeo brings a lot to this town. And I, I don't think we need to hamper this any more than we need to. I, I personally think that we should maybe work with them and see what we can do, so we don't have any of our Public Works out there doing anything with this.
Would the Fire Department be willing to put back whatever they take out?
Absolutely.
I, I've also talked to Chief Jankovic, and he's, he's willing to do whatever he's gotta do to make it work between the city and, and the rodeo. I don't see any pushback or any fight on either side.
Mayor, if I may, I believe that we have a couple people from the Fire District on. They were going to join in on this meeting for discussion, so perhaps you would ask them if they were, if they would be able, or willing to take out and put back. They should be on there, I think, at least two people.
Is it Eric?
Yeah, Mayor, Johnson and Council, we are here. We've been listening and everything you guys have been saying is correct for what we wanna do. I have talked to Jimmy Gordon a little earlier. And I agree, if we could move some of them rocks and take care of that edging, so we can get in and out of that softball field a little easier, make our lives easier. And I seen the one picture that somebody maybe wanted to do, you know, drive down the grass along the western side of that fence between the boulders. That's normally where all the pedestrians would walk. We're just trying to be a little bit safer.
And I tried to make that turn with my truck, and, I mean, and for the rodeo, you get a lot of pickup trucks, and mine's a four-door with long box, so it's, it's a little bit larger than you might see for the most part, but if, so what they're asking us to do right now is, is to have them go, you know, through that one little entrance way there and then drive along the boulders between the fence and make a left-hand turn into the softball field for parking or the baseball field. And to make that turn is really difficult with a larger vehicle, so we would need to move probably four rocks from the beginning there of the north end of that line of rocks, and then probably like three rocks from where the porta potty, there's a pad there, that's probably about right where the end of that picture is, I think, on the south side of that line. So, if you can move like three rocks there, then it would give you a straight shot into the ball field, so that they could stay in the gravel and then take that left turn into the ball field from there.
So, let me, let me ask this, and council, or who's on for the Fire District? Was it Eric?
Jason and Eric? Yeah, Jason, Paul's in there.
I knew I recognized Jason's voice. If, again, if the council objects to this, by all means speak up, or Eric or Jason. What I'd like to do is tomorrow, I'd like to physically go out here, and Matt Sylvester, our Public Works Director, is on as well. I would grab Matt. Matt and I would go out here, if Jason or Eric, one of you are available to physically be there as well, and you physically point out what you're needed to myself and Matt. If Matt and I don't see any objections to it, then I would like to bring it back to the council, and, I mean, the sooner the better. I think what I would do is I would have Ms. Wood call you guys individually, since I can't.
I wouldn't think there'd be need to bring it back to council.
I don't, I don't think so.
You just think I could make that decision myself?
I think, well, could we, could we just vote to let them?
If Matt, if Matt and I deem it to be doable, then...
My suggestion, Mayor and Council, would be that if, if you and your, and Matt go out and make a determination, make that recommendation to the Fire District, they need to turn in their special event permit, and that would, the best place to vote on that would be part of their permit.
Perfect.
Because then it would be in the resolution form, it'd be in their application as a formal request from them. And then council does vote on those, that is a business item. So, if you wanted to approve it as written, you would do so. If you wanted to approve that special event permit with modifications, you would have that chance then.
Yeah, and I think they're just kinda looking for direction on how should they fill the permit out.
Yeah, so, so what we can do, Jason or Eric, if you're available tomorrow, you name the time, Matt and I'll be out. You can tell us what you physically want. Then we can say, yeah, that's doable, put it in a permit, apply for that permit, and then that permit comes to the council, and we'll get it done as long as it's doable.
Yes, that sounds great. That's all we're waiting for, so we can get that permit finished up.
Okay. Jason or Eric, do you have a specific time tomorrow you'd like to go out there?
I'm free anytime tomorrow.
Which one was that?
That's Eric.
About nine o'clock? Nine o'clock work for you guys?
If we may ask, the Public Services Director, I believe that he may be out in the morning.
Mr. Sylvester, does 9:00 AM work for you?
I can make 9:00 AM work.
All right, so at 8:30 AM, I will meet Mr. Sylvester at City Hall, and we will be physically out there at 9:00 AM, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, fellas. Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, goodbye.
All right. I'm glad we got that done. Let's move on to K-2.
K-1.
Nope, K-2. Oh, K-1, you're right, I'm sorry. K-1A, we didn't, so now K-1 is update regarding cleanup day and compost site. Ms. Wood and I spoke on this, but I'll let Ms. Wood tell the rest of you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to update, excuse me, update the council, just so also the public could be aware too. So, at the last council meeting, we all had a discussion on keeping the compost site and the cleanup date open and available for our residents as a great service that we have. And in that discussion, we had said, as long as the governor did not extend the stay-at-home order, as you know, the mayor did, or the governor did extend the stay-at-home order, however, there were modifications to that order that allowed for landscaping, and I just wanted to make council all aware that I reached out to the critical sector, people who get to make the determination of what does get to be open during the stay-at-home order. And they said that compost site and a cleanup day, please do take safety precautions, however, yes, the city can have those open. So, I just wanted to circle back around and let everyone know that we will be holding those on their specific dates that we had set.
So, April 27th, our compost will be open?
Yep.
Awesome. Good to hear.
Sounds great to me.
And was it cleanup day, same day?
Uh, no, the cleanup day is actually the second Saturday in May. I wanna say the ninth.
No, I think you're close. Cleanup day is May...
Oh, yeah. Cleanup day will be Saturday, May 9th.
Saturday, May 9th is cleanup day, okay?
And the compost site, I believe, is opening April 21st, Tuesday.
April 21st is compost.
Today?
It is today, isn't it?
Right before gardening season.
Then it opens.
Well, there you have it. Will you come and get all my compost in your truck? Councilman Collison, bring it over there for me? I'm kidding.
I don't have a truck.
Oh, that's right, you got a Suburban. Looks like I'm leaning on Councilman Lundin.
No.
I'm kidding. I already did it anyway. All right, well, thanks for the information, Ms. Wood. Move on to K-2, resolution accepting the 2019 annual finance report and management letter. Mr. Becker, good to see you, sir.
Good to be here. I don't have any prepared comments, but we do have a recorded presentation from Steve McDonald, who is a managing partner with Abdo Aiken Myers, and they do our annual audit.
So, he still likes you, then?
What's that?
He still likes you, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually spoke to him while he was here and...
I feel sorry for him.
Stated that he felt our finance department was always good, but now it's fantastic. So, that was good to hear.
I like to hear that, too.
So, this is a video.
Viddeo. Roll that beautiful bean footage.
Hello, Mayor, Council, City Staff, and residents of the City of Izanty. I'm Steve McDonald with the CPA firm Abdo Aiken Myers, and I'm going to be presenting...
He was in the darkroom.
No, something weird just happened, so I played it just before.
I like that better.
Oh, that's pretty.
Hello, Mayor.
Hi.
Council, City Staff, and residents of the City of Izanty. I'm Steve McDonald with the CPA firm Abdo Aiken Myers, and I'm going to be presenting the results of the 2019 financial statement audit and some of the financial highlights. Start with the audit opinion and a report on Minnesota legal compliance. You hire us to give an opinion on the financial statements. We consider whether they're fairly presented and materially correct. In the end, we give an opinion, which in your case is an unmodified or a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance you can get. We also perform procedures around specific statutes related to your compliance with Minnesota statutes. These would be areas like bidding, bonding, how you spend money, how you deposit money, things like that. And the important point is that we didn't have any instances of non-compliance with our testing, so that's positive. We consider the internal control of the city. It helps us plan the audit and also helps us consider how information flows through the system. We had one finding related to internal control. This has consistently been reported in prior years and really is a reflection of the limited number of people involved in your process around preparing financial statements. Now, our firm prepares your financial statements. The city takes responsibility for them. Because there's only one person involved in the process, that is a limited segregation duties. The monitoring that they have in place, or the compensated control you have in place, is that the Finance Director closely reviews the financial statements and ties out all the information to his finance system, which is an adequate monitoring process. In the prior year, we had two findings. One related to material audit adjustments. These were corrections of decisions that management had made by our firm. We didn't have any of those situations in the 2019 audit, so good progress in addressing that finding. Also, we had reported last year that there was insufficient collateral covering your bank deposits, and there were steps put in place to ensure that that was monitored every month, and we did not have any issues related to collateral coverage. Next, we're gonna talk about the numbers in the financial statements, beginning with the general fund. The graphic you see here relates fund balance to the following year's budget. We've set a target of, or the city has a target of maintaining a reserve of 50%, of which you plan to spend in the following years. Currently, you're at 31%, which would be below recommended minimums. Generally, you'll see 35% to 50% being the target. So, even though it is below that number, you still have adequate cash flow to fund the first five months, but not much there for out-of-the-ordinary kind of expenses. Comparison of budget to actual, bottom line is that the fund balance went backwards $147,000. The city had actually planned for a decrease of $598,000 when the 2019 budget was approved. In what was unique about the 2019 budget is there was over $500,000 planned to use of, there was a planned use of reserves of about $500,000 in 2019 budget. Going forward, 2020 and beyond, that budget is set to be a break-even budget. The general fund revenues by, grouped together by type, are showing for three years. You can see taxes showed a decrease from 18 to 19 again, because using reserves was the funding mechanism to ensure that there were, that we did have a balanced budget. Other categories were pretty consistent year-to-year. Intergovernmental, which would be state aids, transfers from other funds, and the other category, which includes things like fines and forfeits and business permits. Expenditures, three-year comparison here, what stands out is the other category. You could see a large spike in 2018. That's due to that business subsidy that was completed in 2018. Other categories do show an increase year-over-year. General government, public safety, Public Works was fairly consistent. The next group of funds I'm going to talk about are your capital project funds. In 2019, we ended with fund balance of about $1,004,000, which is up about $545,000 from the prior year. Largest increase was related to the Highway 64, capital project fund that was started, was funded in 2019. Our message with capital project funds is that any fund that has a deficit should have a financing plan on how it's going to eliminate that deficit. I believe in all cases, there's, there's plan to eliminate those deficits at some point over the next year or so. Special revenue funds are presented next. In total, we have $646,000 of fund balance, which is an increase of $219,000. And similar messages we had with the capital project funds is that the, any fund in deficit should have a financing plan. And the, the indoor arena did show an improvement of about $11,000 from the prior year. Debt service funds, we have about $3.2 million in bonds outstanding at the end of the year. We have positive cash and asset balances for each of the three funds outstanding. That shows you're accumulating sufficient resources for repayment. You can see in 2022, the 2011 AGO improvement bonds are paid off. That's the reason for the, the decrease going from 21 to 22. So, we cut the outstanding bonds by more than half going into 2022. Next, we're gonna talk about the enterprise funds, beginning with the water fund. One of the key things is healthy cash balance. You can see we have about $2.1 million in cash at the end of the year. We also have good operating margins. Operating margin would be operating revenue minus operating expense, so the blue and the gray bar. The green bar represents principal and interest. So, in 2019, you can see that operating revenue covered both operating expense and debt service requirements. Sewer fund, similar, healthy cash balance, $3.3 million at the end of the year. All four years presented showed operating revenue in excess of the operating expenses and debt service. So, the charges from the system are covering the major costs of the, of the fund. With $3.3 million, there's a good balance for future capital needs and continued funding of operating expenses. Stormwater has had increasing cash balances for four years. We have an imbalance of about $376,000, and operating margins again that are positive, so operating revenue exceeds operating expenses. There's no debt service in the stormwater fund. Nature of stormwater funds is that you build up these reserves and they're used for larger Next, the liquor fund. Sales increased for each of the last three years. Our gross profit, which is the green line here, is dropped a little bit from the prior year, but still is healthy compared to statewide averages at just about 27%. We have consistent cash balances. Remember that the liquor fund transfers profits to the general fund of $350,000 in 2019. So, we have adequate reserves in the general fund and decent profitability. All of our cash investments are reflected on this graph. So, total cash investments for all city funds are presented here. You can see in 2019, we're over $12 million in cash investments. About half of it in the enterprise fund, so we highlighted the water and sewer cash balances. You can see that reflected here. General fund also is one of the larger categories, reflected in the blue. Next, we're gonna summarize some of the key performance indicators. We've compiled ratios of cities in Izanty County and all the Class 4 cities in the state, so that would be similar population to the City of Izanty. And first is tax rates, so our tax rate has shown decreases for the last three years, and now you're trending lower than the county averages and approaching the statewide averages of tax rates. So, for a growing city, that's good. Taxes per capita have been consistent for the years presented, but did show a decrease in 2019. Our current expenditures per capita have been consistent except for 2018, where that business subsidy was done. That's the main reason for the, the increase in the current expenditures per capita. Our capital expenditures per capita have bounced around a little bit, trending down for the last three years. The next grouping that we look at are your debt service ratios. Our debt expenditure per capita, so bond, principal and interest, has trended down for each of the last three years. And if you remember, the debt service graph showed that in 2022, we make a significant reduction in outstanding bonds. And again, that's assuming with no new debt in 2020 or 2021. Our debt service expenditures is a percent of total expenditures, so the higher the percentage, the more reliant you are in debt financing. And you can see that it's been, it's dropped fairly significantly from where we were in 2016, and increased slightly in... and increased slightly in twenty nineteen. But around thirteen percent, I think that most rating agencies would say that that's a reasonable amount of debt. We discuss coverage ratios in the next, next two graphs for both water and sewer fund. Remember, I mentioned operating revenue covering operating expenses and debt service. If, if our operating revenue minus our operating expenses exceeds our, our debt service, it's reflected in this graph. So with water fund, we, we have coverage of a hundred and thirty-four percent based on the charges that we have in the system. So we generate enough revenue to cover the bond, principal and interest. And sewer is significantly higher than the bond payments outstanding, so that's positive. Thank you for the opportunity to present this report virtually. We also thank you for having us out to do your audit. We appreciate the working with your staff. They did a great job getting ready for the audit and responding to all of our questions and just working through all the process. If you have any questions, you can call me at the nine five two seven one five three zero zero two number. Justin Nielsen was our manager on the job. He has done a great job planning the audit and executing on it. And then the rest of our audit team of Eric, Jeff, Jill and Tommy kept everything going. So thank you again for the opportunity and please follow up with any questions if you, if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions that the council has at this time, we can direct them at Mr. Becker.
What was that business expense in two thousand and eighteen, do you remember? They talked about, maybe it was an expense, but something business.
Yeah, the business subsidy was in two thousand and eighteen. That referred to the, the subsidy for the hotel project.
Oh, okay.
Now, so where the fund balance changed, who was that?
Yeah, that was the big drop in the fund balance. To be honest, I thought we might have a larger drop in fund balance in twenty nineteen using five hundred thousand in, in fund balance for the general fund. But in the end, the actuals, we did quite a bit better than we had budgeted. So we didn't see very much of a drop. I think we went from thirty-three down to thirty-one percent, so.
He referred to it as five hundred thousand, or was that, did I mishear that? Because it was eight hundred and fifty.
So in two thousand and eighteen, we had the business subsidy that was about eight hundred and fifty thousand. In two thousand and nineteen, we budgeted use of fund balance, which is basically like using cash out of the bank, five hundred thousand out of fund balance, to balance out the general fund budget.
Gotcha.
Right? So those are two separate events, one in two thousand and eighteen and the next in two thousand and nineteen.
It still stings every time I hear it. Well, gentlemen, I guarantee we wouldn't do that. Any other questions for Mr. Becker before I start dwelling?
Fine, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, as always, Mr. Becker. We'll move on to item K three.
We do have a resolution to accept the, the audit report.
Motion to accept.
Second. I have a motion to accept by Councilman Lundine and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Steve Lundine, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And Jeff Johnson, aye. Motion carries five zero. Thanks again, Mr. Becker. Moving on to K three, the resolution approving a
Memorandum.
Memorandum, I was almost stumbling over that, of understanding between the city of Izanty and the independent school district number nine one one for school resource officer program. Ms. Wood, would you care to elaborate?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and Council, I was reached out by Superintendent Nate Rudolph. And he had made a request that with the school not being in session and them doing remoting, that he requested to have the school resource officer program suspended for the remainder of this year, effective April first, and then going to the end of the year with, of this school year, which was approximately June fifth or so. He has every intent to keep the program going beginning of next year, but had asked that they don't incur the cost without having the need to have the school resource officer in the building, in the facility. The attorney did draft this MOU. He had, the superintendent Rudolph has already reviewed it, as well as, I believe, their finance director over there. And they do recommend, they do agree that this is what they are requesting. I do believe it has to go to the school board, too.
Is it, I know for a while we were debating on full-time, not full-time. What, what is the status on that? Did we go full-time, did we go part-time?
For our CSO, I mean, for our school resource officer, he's full-time.
Well, he's full-time in the schools, but we do carry insurance and he does work shifts when they're not in session. So during the summer and also during like spring breaks and things. So it's a shared agreement that we currently have.
Was it, we were, went back and forth for a while, did we not?
Um, we did. This, the agreement that we're under now has been in place for approximately a year and a half, I believe.
Okay.
There was a, there was a time that a previous mayor was having issues because Cambridge was, the school in Cambridge was getting more perks and benefits than they are in Izanty. And they, they supplied a car for him over there and this and that. It doesn't matter here or there. I think Adam has been doing a phenomenal job. He's been recommended or recognized by many things with the school for what he's done. I, I think we just, you know, if we can make an agreement with him, I think we just move forward with it.
Yeah, I'm questioning Adam's job. I just know it used to be in question, full-time, part-time, that type of thing. I was just wondering where we were with it, so.
He's full-time SRO, but as Ms. Wood stated, then he, he works some shifts too for PD.
So, I mean, are we still going to continue to pay his salary then, or how does that work then? I mean, so right now, are they
That what they would do
subcontracting him out or whatever right now, right?
What they would do is obviously they wouldn't pay him for SRO because he's not in the school.
Right.
But if he still works for the city of Izanty, then yes, we would pay his salary.
So we're not going to recover any of that cost then if we, but we're also not providing the service, I guess, so he is open to do other things, huh?
Correct.
Yes, so Councilmember Gordon, he's put back into rotation with the other officers as a patrol officer.
Okay.
As he would normally in the summer anyway, so.
Correct.
Just, it's really nothing different. It's just happening quicker than normal. That's the only thing different.
With our pandemic going on, there's a lot of things that've changed.
I agree. Was that a motion, Councilman Lundine?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to accept this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second simultaneously by Councilman Gordon and Councilman Collison. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Steve Lundine, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And myself, aye as well. Motion carries five zero. Do I have a motion to accept and approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Lundine and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Steve Lundine, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And myself, Jeff Johnson, aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion carries five zero. Obviously, I have no opposed, and we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lundine. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Steve Lundine, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
Jeff Johnson, aye. Motion carries five zero with no opposes, therefore we stand adjourned.
Mayor and council will go right into planning.